All right, so I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Is there any public audience? Katie, did we get anything from anyone in email? All right. So seeing no public audience, we're going to move to Board and Administrative Communication. And I'm going to hijack it for just a minute, if you all bear with me. Mrs. Murray, that is the last meeting with us.
Oh, boy.
We just have a little something from the Board to you to say thank you for your many, many years of service and for all your kindness regarding all these new people you've had to train.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you so much. We will miss you greatly.
It's hard. It's hard to even begin to imagine that it's only a couple of weeks away, but I can only tell you that, you know, I'm leaving a fantastic school district led by wonderful people and will continue to be. And I just hope that the work that I've done over the last 14 to 17 years is going to make an impact. And thank you.
Well, it already has, and I'm sure it will continue for many years to come.
Thank you. Thank you. So.
Oh, boy.
A little dusty over here in the corner.
And one other thing I wanted to say before I lost track of it is, as you drove up tonight, you must have seen the Simsbury 350 sign on the front lawn. So a big shout out to Cameron Bopp and his students who made that sign for the 350 Committee.
Oh, wow.
Very cool.
Just a fabulous work of art and so happy that it's on our front lawn and we get to see it. All right, so now I'm going to turn back all to you two, all of you. Jeff, you want to go?
No, not right now, thank you.
Okay. Lynn?
Yeah, just briefly, the end of the year on legislative and federally. On the NSBA federal fund, just briefly, they were closing the year. Congress is leaving on the 18th. And you'd be interested that they're trying to decide how to invest into the Department of Education, $950 billion. So let's hope that they come to some conclusion with that. Some of the NSBA pandemic advisory priorities, and this is going into now 2021 because as we close out this year, we're moving right into the next with the new administration. So some of the areas, the general K-12 purposes, IDEA, Title I, and closing the homework gap devices and broadband. So hopefully, this will continue with the new administration. Biden's team has been working very closely with NSBA, his transitional team. And this is the first time, and I don't know how long I can remember, that really we have a voice at the table as far as the Boards of Education, National School Board Association. So that is a really good sign.
That's great.
So we're hoping to continue that momentum. On the state side, again, we're closing out the year and the new session will begin in February. You know it's a long year this year, so it's the second year of, it will be starting a whole new budget. And some of the main issues that we'll be talking about, or what we'll be zooming about, actually, because we will not have the opportunity to be on the Hill since they will not be there. But some of the areas are learning loss, equity, COVID, safety, school lunch debt, ventilation, transportation, SEL, and teacher prep. So these are a lot of the areas now that we at CAE and CREG are going to be pursuing with our legislators, and they do not forget about this. We're asking for no new mandates for education, but to alleviate some of the mandates that they had put in the past due to the COVID areas. So that is it. And the other thing is, I participated last week, CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, held an excellent webinar as part of their Zoom conference. And it was about achieving racial equity with national experts that were able to speak. So if you get a chance to get onto that, onto CCM website and listen to, it was about two hours, but it was fascinating about what they all, you know, were talking about within the country in terms of the equity. And that's it for me until the new year.
Thank you. I'm going to pause for one second. Apparently, we're having trouble with the video feed.
Oh, okay.
So we're just trying to figure out why we don't have video. But I think if we have more communications, we can probably work through that. But I just don't want to move forward with the presentations until we know we've got video online.
Okay.
Okay. Tara?
Hi. It was, we had Simsbury celebrates after Thanksgiving, and it was great. We had the Simsbury High School's cabaret, holiday cabaret sing. And if you want to see it, it's on Simsbury Community Television, SCTV. It's on, you know, Channel 1084, I think. But it'll be played throughout the season. But those kids were amazing, and they did it, you know, they were all zoomed in, and it was really a very well-produced piece.
That's great.
And we had a lot of great local talent, but that was particularly fun.
Good. Wonderful. Thanks.
That's it.
I think nothing for you. Sarah? Mrs. Murray?
All right. We have, every year, we have the Computer Science Hour of Code. So it's starting this week. We have had our high school students that have put together wonderful opportunities for our elementary, for every grade level. So that will continue into next week. And just really continuing to try to make the connections between the high school students and the elementary students and the students at the middle school. So Hour of Code is on, didn't go away, and it's going on this week and into next week.
Perfect. Thank you. Right. Amy?
Just a quick update on the CARES money. So last time we met, I let you know that we applied for an additional $80,000 in CARES money. Not all the districts were able to use their allocations, so it went back to a pot. So we did apply for the extra money, and we were awarded the extra $80,000.
Oh, wonderful. That's great. Thank you for that. Mrs. Lemke?
Just as a follow-up, we are participating in a school nutrition program that allows our students, all students, to receive both free breakfast and lunch. So communications did go out to our community from building principles. But should any family have any question, certainly you may reach out to school administrators, and they can help you with that process.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Neil?
Just wanted to update the Board that after your last meeting, appointing Maggie Seidel to the Director of Instructional Technology position, we are underway with our search for a new Tooten Hills principal. There's a focus group discussion with the faculty tomorrow during their half-day PD. And we're going to be doing a Zoom opportunity for parents at 7:00 PM tomorrow night. That link has been sent out if they want to give us feedback about the process. Our application pool is good. We've got a robust pool already, and it closes at the end of this coming week. And we'll be reviewing applications at that point with the process taking place through January. So, and I also would want to let the Board know that Maggie has already begun her transition into the new role. And we did have the opportunity on a part-time basis to bring in a retired administrator. Larry Sparks was literally 30 years as an administrator in Farmington and Avon most recently, retired in the summer of 2019, and has agreed to take on a gig at Tooten Hills School for a couple of months to support Maggie's transition. And he's very familiar with our school system and sent three sons from K to 12 through our school system. So he's already made a great transition into the Tooten Hills community.
Terrific.
Retired in 2019, put on his mask, and got back.
Retirements are never very long-lived, are they? We are looking at it. Katie already asked.
Katie had said they are having trouble with the channel. You can watch it on YouTube while they continue to work on it, I guess is the situation right now, but definitely having trouble with the video feed.
And a couple of different meetings have had problems of late, so, yeah. So anybody interested, please tune in on YouTube. Sharon, we just went through communications. Do you have anything you want to add? Okay. Mr. Gertis?
Yes, just wanted to keep the Board updated. As you know, every Friday, I send out a communication to both the staff and to the community about where we are with kind of our COVID assessment in terms of our instructional model. So as people are aware, we're moving forward right now and continuing with the hybrid at the high school, full instruction. At K-8, we are at 20 cases per 100,000. So like the rest of the Farmington Valley communities, we have seen a rise in the activity of cases in the community. Sue was on a call with me this morning with the Farmington Valley Health District. And really, some of the parameters that we're looking very closely at are our ability to staff the buildings when we need to quarantine students, our ability to contact trace with fidelity in the school building, you know, the ability of the Farmington Valley to continue to contact trace and communicate with fidelity on their part of this, you know? And then, most importantly, are we seeing in-person spread within our schools? And we are not, to this point, you know, our schools are a controlled environment, and that's something that the further we get into the school year and people talk about what's going on in schools across the country, they're pretty predictable. We have solid mitigation strategies in place. Yes, it is getting more challenging. I don't want to not be honest with that. There's strain on the system in terms of time, in terms of substitutes. But right now, we're going to continue to move forward in that model, and we will review it multiple times a week like we do and continue to communicate with you and with the community. But I just want to, I want to thank our staff. I want to thank our students, parent support. Everybody is doing what we can do to keep our schools open. And we're looking forward, quite honestly, to another week and a half or so, and a well-deserved break, I think, for everybody to step away from this, decompress a little bit, and get ready for the new year. So just wanted to share that update with the Board.
Thank you very much. It's a true collaboration, and we appreciate everybody trying to do their part, and certainly staff and administration. And our students have been amazing at it. So we do appreciate it.
Let me just ask you a quick question. Have you listened to Dr. Fauci or any of the experts, for that matter? There was a concern about, you know, Thanksgiving and coming off of Thanksgiving and an uptick. Have we seen that? I mean, or let me ask it a different way. Can you even make that correlation? But I just.
No, I mean, fair question. It certainly is getting a lot of conversation in the media. In terms of the state positivity rate today was quite high. It was over 8%. I think they attributed that to kind of the fallout from Thanksgiving. As far as the activity and the assessment we see with boots on the ground in the schools, it's been pretty consistent the last two reporting periods for what we've seen for student and staff cases. And it's similar so far this week. You know, I don't have the crystal ball there. We do take it day by day.
No, but that's good.
But we haven't seen that in-house.
Great.
Spike yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Moving on to recommended actions, we have administrative appointments.
Okay. So really excited this evening. Certainly, as you're aware, a lot of our planning and conversations this year have been around the safe opening and return of our students and our staff to the school building. And I think, Susan, you teed up our meeting perfectly today, and I talked about Aaron's impact to the organization at our last board meeting. That's just been incredible. But, you know, with Aaron's retirement, with some of the changes we've seen in central office over the last year, we've also put quite a time of thought and energy into what a restructure and plan would look like in central office moving forward in supporting the work. So this evening, I'm very excited to recommend to the Board that Sue Lemke be appointed the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and Neil Sullivan be appointed the Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services effective the first of the year. We've had several meetings, several conversations about the restructure plan. I think this kind of, as we called it in our discussions, umbrella, more of an umbrella approach, right? Looking for some efficiencies within our organization, but doing so with people that we have a great deal of respect and confidence in. So Sue will slide over into Aaron's role. It will be a little bit different, and that Sue will still have special education under her purview. What we want to do is bring all things teaching and learning under one umbrella. And we will also be posting for a Director of Special Services, an incredibly important position, to support the leadership of that. But that person will get the guidance and important relationship with Sue. So what we'll create is really four director positions, three of which are already there and budgeted for, Director of Special Services, Director of Instructional Technology, Neil talked about earlier, and Maggie Seidel, we've just appointed, Director of Elementary Curriculum, and Betsy Gonzalez has been doing great work there. And then we look forward to supporting what was a board request in conversation with the Board, new position to talk about as we work our way through the process, a Director of Equity and Inclusion as well. And I think that's a real solid teaching and learning umbrella. Neil, over the past year, year and a half, has taken on more responsibilities in the absence of Burke Leclair from the business office. So in addition to Neil, who has run our personnel operation, we plan to create an umbrella and move the operations side under him as well. So Jason Casey, Andy O'Brien, on the facilities and capital side, will work with Neil. And I think we've created two really positive avenues and leadership umbrellas for our district to really be in good position for the years to come. We've also talked about, not specifically a motion tonight, but Amy Meriwether has joined our team in really a fantastic fashion this year and will serve as Board of, you know, the Finance Director for both the town and the Board of Ed. So it's a restructure in a sense where we do gain efficiencies, and we will have some cost savings to talk about in the budget process. But I think, most importantly, it sets us up for success in the future as we work to fill some big shoes that have done some great work, that, as Aaron said, you hope it'll stick, it'll absolutely stick. With that, I ask the Board to consider the motion.
All right. So does anyone want to make the motion?
I'm happy to make the motion. I'm happy to move that the Board of Education appoint Sue Amrock Lemke to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and Neil Sullivan to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Administration effective January 1, 2021.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I think it's a great way to reorganize. I think the time, I think it's, timing is what it is. You've got to take advantage of opportunities. And I think we've got the right people to be putting in the right places, and I'm really excited about it.
I thoroughly agree. I think we're taking our central office in a really good direction, and we are excited as we work through the budget process to try to include that fourth director in Director of Equity and see where that goes. But I, too, am very pleased. And with that, can I get a vote on this motion, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations to Sue and Neil.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it.
And Amy, you're already old hat. Sorry. No big congratulations to you. You're just stuck with us. And once again, Mrs. Murray, we'll miss you dearly.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Approval of the minutes from November 10. Can I get a motion, please? So move. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Oh, I will abstain. I was not there.
And I'll make the motion to accept the minutes. That's why I circled my name when I, I make a motion to accept the minutes for the meeting of November 10.
All right. Todd's the second. And, all right. Are we good, Katie? Or do I need to do anything? All right. We're all good. All right. Approval of minutes for November 24, special meeting.
I'm moving.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Nope, everybody was there. All right. Thank you very much. Enrollment projections, information reports. Do, oh, Neil, I'm sorry. Do we have video? Do we know? Should we hold off a little?
There's no video.
All right. Sharon, are your people reporting video?
No video yet. They can hear us now again, so the reboot is up. Oh, yes, success.
All right. Yay. Here we go. In time for the, in time for the good stuff. All right.
Perfect.
Thank you for keeping us on track here.
Because this is Neil's favorite presentation.
We know. I wouldn't want it. I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want people not to see.
Very disappointed to not capture this annual presentation. But as excited as I am.
Sharing the joy. Sharing the joy.
As excited as I get, I am urged to keep it brief. So I've got just a few slides for you tonight in terms of our enrollment projections. As the Board knows, we take our October 1 state reporting numbers. We feed those back to Malone and McBroom as the demographer in the enrollment projection folks. They take a few weeks to turn it around, look at the trends. Interestingly, the trends we experienced in Simsbury mirror those that other suburban districts felt this year during the pandemic in terms of lower enrollment than was projected in, across our demographic group. So it's a pretty stable look at things. I always like to say to the Board, this is really the first budget document of the year because this is really how we base all of our staffing decisions, based, at least the enrollment-driven staffing decisions, as opposed to program improvement decisions. So I'll just go through the numbers and then see what questions you have. So this, we get a 10-year projection for purposes of showing it to the public. We only show five years because the demographers will warn you that projections beyond five years are much less solid in terms of, but they are helpful for long-term planning for something like a facilities and enrollment study, but not something you really want to be looking at in terms of a year-to-year. So we start with the history. So looking backwards first, and you can see on the left, we look back to 2016. We were at 4,110 students. We thought that the middle bar at 4,018, in 2018, October 1, was going to be the lowest point we reached. But obviously, the lower enrollment driven by the pandemic this year is now at 3,960, really, the lowest enrollment. This will be the absolute end of the low enrollment trend. So that's the look back, and then the 10,000-foot view of the look forward is right here. So now that 3,960 that was on the right-hand side of the slide goes to the left, and we're moving forward. And so for next year, you can see that Malone and McBroom is predicting 60 additional students to the 3,960. You'll, you may recall that on October 1, we were 65 students lower than last year. So this is really just a statement that those students are coming back. And that is kind of what they're predicting, is that the drop that we experienced will be back by next September. And then if you look at the five-year out, you're looking at 4,167. So I like to look at these two slides and say, 4,110, it's gone down to 3,960. And if you kind of look at the next five-year trend, it's going right back up to where it was and beyond. So that, you know, really, over time, we've hit the bottom of the curve at this point.
So in a non-COVID year, we would have expected flat enrollment this year.
We would have expected a flat enrollment. That was our projection, was flat enrollment.
When those 60 kids come back, are they going to be K or first?
We're going to get there.
I'm sorry.
And we're going to, so.
Sorry.
I'll break this down for you, just point you to where I'm speaking about on the slide. Upper-left first, this is the overall, the 60 students increased, and 207 in five years, which is a 5% increase, about 1% a year, to get to 5.2 over five years. Looking below that, you can see that all of that increase for next year is predicted at the elementary level. So it's 63 students more at the elementary level, much of that in K and 1 as a projection. The K number, they expect to rebound from a very low number this year, and they also expect the first-grade number to increase fairly dramatically over what it is in K. So those are interesting, too. But not all of that 63 in K and, is in K and 1, but a very high percentage of it is. So, and over five years, 239 more students, or a little over 10% increase at the elementary level. Going to the upper right-hand side, you can see the middle school. The middle school is projected to be the exact same number of kids as this year, 633 and 633. So no budget-driven implications there, and a modest increase over the next five years of 27 students. And then for the high school, you can see almost an exact same number. It's a decrease of only three students projected for next year, and the decline of 59 students over the five-year period. And I'll show you where this dips. I want to talk about one particular class that's going to affect what happens in the middle school and high school over the next few years. So these are our five elementary schools, color-coded, so that you can see the top bar is Squadron Line, our largest school. And of course, we want to talk about the yellow line, which is Latimer Lane, our most stressed school in terms of population and space. The two that kind of merge together there in a red and a bluish tint are Tooten Hills and Central School, which are almost the exact same size. And then the green at the bottom is our Tariffill. So this shows you five years out, and at Squadron Line, you can see the increase projected over five years of about 100 students. And at Tooten, and at Latimer, a projection of about 80 students over five years. I can tell you, we've had some talk about Latimer Lane. We are okay for next year. We've had some talk earlier about a potential need for modulators. We, the way we're projecting our classrooms based on the cohort sizes for next year, we believe we are okay and have enough all-purpose classroom space to be able to fit the cohorts into Latimer Lane next year. So not planning toward any modular classrooms on the capital improvement, and I'm confident in that, in that decision. So the.
That is just specific to next year.
That's just specific to next year.
Just want to make that clear.
The year after looks.
Well, I, I'd like to see what our Board and the Board of Finance are able to do in terms of getting a project onto the calendar and then knowing what we.
And deciding what we need to do. Okay. That's fair.
And, you know, because you could, a strategy that this Board knows we've used before, you know, there are things where you can take a kindergarten and move it to another school for a year and kind of survive that and then bring them back to their home school. We've done that in some cases in the past. So, and then not have to spend money on modulators because you've made a different solution.
Right.
So, so those are not things we're ready to make those decisions about. That's going to be driven by the capital project. But that's where we are with the five elementary schools. No particularly striking examples, kind of, the same dip that we had is just projected to go back to where it was expected to be. This is my favorite chart, so I will stop. This is, this is looking at, I think this chart might go for 20 years. The bottom line, the bluer line, is the births that happened five years before the date on the chart. And the top line is how many kindergarteners got generated from that many births five years before. And so what you see at the very end of the curve at the top is a really sharp descending curve. So if you, if you look at those numbers, just a year ago, 181 births five years ago resulted in 283 kindergarteners. But for this year, we had 195 births five years ago, but only 252 kindergarteners. So what the lines at the bottom tell you is that the way they do this work is to figure out a ratio. Normally, that ratio's in the neighborhood of 1.42, and this year, it was only 1.29. That number almost never moves, and it moved significantly this year. That's, that's actually statistically significant finding to say, boy, it was, it was that many fewer students. And that is why our kindergarten of 252 students is abnormally small. So.
And it's 100% COVID-related.
It's, we believe it to be COVID-related. We believe people decided.
Significant, but it's not surprising.
I'm not, I'm not going to send my kindergartner this year. If I, if I'm weighing a choice whether to send or not, we believe they erred on the "I'm not sending." And so what, what, that, that.
Just for the record, I sent.
And that's kind of the discussion of when they do decide to send, assuming that we have a vaccination program and that things are going to be back more to normal, will those parents enroll those students in kindergarten, or will they bypass kindergarten and enroll them in first grade? And that's something we're going to have to watch very closely.
Are we, is there a point at which we're going to try to ask for that information?
We get, we start asking for that information in February with, we have, we definitely have some census information, but we hold, I imagine, virtual open houses now and start to collect that information.
Right.
We put the pressure on by April for you to make a decision, and that is-
Are we going to have some wiggle room? I'm just thinking, if the vaccine isn't really maybe going to be here until the end of the second quarter, are we going to give a little wiggle room in that decision?
We'll, we'll try to get an answer for people. There's always wiggle room. I mean, they can always change their mind. We have people who tell us right up until the date that they think they're going to send and then decide not to. But we, yeah, we may have to be more flexible with staffing in the summer months, and that's something that we're going to have to watch.
Okay.
So I just wanted to show the middle school for a moment because the first two data points you can see are the exact flat projection of 633 and 633. But then it dips for two years down to 602 and 606 before heading back up. We have a abnormally small current fifth grade. It is only 265 students for a Simsberry cohort. That's very small. Most of our cohorts are more like 310, 320. And so that is them simply working their way through the middle school. That's that small fifth grade working its way through. And that will affect decisions we'll need to make about size of teams as that group goes through. So those will be budget decisions, not for this coming year, but for next year that we're going to look at. And then the high school, which remains very flat essentially for the next three years, that is 1309. And then if you look at the fourth point, it's 1291, before it dips down to 1246. And that's that same factor. That's following that fifth-grade class until they become ninth graders. And so we have gained a lot of saved FTE on the high school enrollment declining. This picture would tell us for the next few years that you're pretty much done being able to capture FTE out of the high school. We might be able to shave a little bit here or there, be strategic around a retirement or two, but you're not going to yield a whole lot of staffing savings out of the high school the way we have over the last few years, when we've been able to count on maybe minus two FTE or minus three FTE as we've done. So that's that group. So on conclusions, you can see that they're suggesting an increase of 60 for next year, but an average of 41 students over the next five. It's that enrollment in K1 that we've talked about. It's going to need to be closely monitored, given what happened during the pandemic. And as I said, the staffing decisions in those primary grades, as you said, Susan, they're just going to have to be flexible. We're going to have to have some wiggle room and know that we may need to make some late decisions. And then the other point is about that current grade-five class, and one that I will be watching very carefully as it works its way through the middle school.
The classes on either side of that grade five are-
Normal size.
Average, what you would expect. So to think we're going to have a huge savings when they roll through, it's such a short window.
No.
That's not going to be an, that's not an impact either.
I would see it as, certainly at the middle school right now, they're staffing their seventh and eighth-grade teams exactly evenly. And I could see it a year where you made a bigger team in the grade that was, and then kind of switch it in the next year.
Okay.
So I could, we've done that before, too. And so I picture that changing the, in order to keep class sizes about the same, you shift a section or two to the other grade. And that's what I figure is going to happen with that cohort, but they're, they're interesting. I mean, that, when it gets to the high school, that'll be the smallest high school class we've had in decades.
Yeah.
Hey, Susan, can I just mention, this is why I like facilities enrollment, because I can geek out on the stuff with Neil.
[laughter]
But I just, just, I just want to emphasize to people that this is not a unique to Simsberry issue, this, this blip for this year. And I know you all are always riveted to your Cave Journal when it comes into your mailbox, but they did a little blurb on this. And I just wanted to say, again, there's 15,000 fewer students, a 3% decrease enrolled in Connecticut schools this year. 50% of those are pre-K and kindergarten, another 10% are first graders. So again, just to emphasize what Neil is saying, or put another light on, it is, this is not, again, this is not just a Simsberry issue, meaning this whole group is coming back. So-
Yep. This is a COVID result.
Right. So the groups that are critical of us about the projections, you put this along with, there's, what, 200 units in town that are not filled yet, that have just been built, and you have the influx of people from New York and Boston. Just ask any of your friendly realtors of how busy they've been. My point is that we should be very confident in those numbers.
Yep.
And yes, expecting that return.
This is coming, that number is going up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Neil?
Every town in our reference group, Durd B., with the exception of one, had a significantly smaller kindergartner, kindergarten than it had the year before. Every single, so in the detailed data that Malona McBroom gives me, it's pretty remarkable to look at when you, and that was just supporting the fact that it's all districts feeling this. Suburban districts, all suburban districts are kind of feeling it the same way.
The, the blue line on your favorite chart.
Yes.
If you were to continue the blue line out five years, that continues to go up, and that's where the-
Can we put our blue line back up so people know what Todd's talking about?
What it should do is that the amount of space between the two lines should stay consistent.
Right.
So that, and that, what you're really looking at in that chart is the amount of space between the lines to say that the ratio is consistent. And what you could see is the space between the lines dramatically changing at the end of the curve.
Right.
And they expect it to get back out, that the space-
But we know that the 195, we know the numbers for the next five years after that, and that continues to-
We know a couple more years. That was all part of the study that we did. So one of the ways that Malona and McBroom is, in my opinion, superior to what Nezdeck did, when we use Nezdeck, is you go through a pretty rigorous fact-finding process that then all has, they actually identify the live births, whereas Nezdeck estimated the births. So Malona and McBroom, we have three more years where we know how many kids were born in Simsberry in that year.
Right.
And then we'll have to go through another sign-off with the, you, you, I can't remember what department of the state it is, but it is, it is like top secret. He, the superintendent has to sign, like, he's not going to use this data for evil purposes. And then you, then Malona and McBroom is forced to destroy it because it's considered privacy of, of-
Information, yeah.
So what we'll do when that time comes, when we don't have any more live birth data, which I think is three years out, we'll commission Malona and McBroom to do that again. So we, we now, I can get you that answer offline, but it's a couple more years.
I'm not looking for it. I just, I mean, so, but that, that line, because-
It'll go back up?
Yeah. It keeps going up, and then the gold line you expect will dip up as we get up.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Absolutely. Yep. Back to that percentage at 1.42. Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for Neil?
Thank you very much. Always a pleasure.
You like when we have questions for your presentation on the roadmap.
Oh, my God, can I put it up again?
All right. I had two pretty much quick hits tonight, just to touch on. Neil mentioned at the onset with his enrollment presentation, that's a little bit of the kickoff of the budget season because we, we ground our staffing in that. We also, last week, had our tri-board meeting, as we call it, right? So the meeting of the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Education. And it's a meeting where the outcome normally is, we receive guidance, normally on both the capital, which I'll talk about in a minute, but the operating budgets as well. So just wanted to touch on that a little bit, put up some of our major fixed costs, which the Board of Finance had, just to get people comfortable with. This is a format that we will look at throughout the budget season, kind of the ins and outs of how we get to an overall increase. But coming out of that meeting, after various discussion points and feedback was, was a cap or a guideline of 1.5% increase in operating budgets for both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. So just to put that in perspective a little bit, when you look at the fixed costs, you see that additions up top, that portion of the chart. So that's just a straight rollover. That's taken our current staffing levels, our current contractual obligations, rolling them over into a new year so we can start the planning process. And when you look at those first three line items and the impact of reserves there, we're a little bit over 2% when you look at that in and of itself. You add the insurance projection, which is about a, I think it was like a 9% increase overall, right? So we may have a little bit of play in that number as we move forward. And you're, you're at over 3% in your fixed costs before you're talking about increases or other areas of your operation. The one place early on in the process, we know we can always find some savings, is look at our projected retirements. This is, this is a, I think we put five, five or six in there, just as an estimate at this point, where we gain savings in the differential between a high-level teacher retiring and a mid, mid-level hire. So all said and done, I guess my point is, we start this planning process in earnest with 3% in fixed costs. I think the important thing for the board to recognize, Neil hit on it very well, a couple of you asked about it. It's not a year where when we look at the projections with enrollment, we can say, hey, we can easily capture two FTE here or three over here. We're flat in enrollment. I mean, we will take a hard look at our staffing. We certainly had some moving, a lot of moving parts as our staffs stepped up in many different ways to deal with the COVID situation. So we'll analyze areas of our staffing and really take a look. We did add some elements that we may need, we may be able to draw back on and find some savings. But in terms of what we've been able to do for many years of capturing retirements pretty easily without impacting programming, I, I believe that's more of a challenge now, and it's a function of, it's a function of the enrollment. So that's something, something to think about and something I think that you've, you've already figured out. But we start next week, late next week, meeting with program leaders and with principals on their individual budgets. So we start our process behind the scenes as we get ready to report out to you and public on where we are. So we have new format, new forums. Amy's done a great job with us in time, in terms of making this electronic and efficient to our process, and we look forward to sharing that with you. But it's, it's a big ask. So I put that on the table in a non-judgmental way, that 3% to 1 and 1/2%, there are some things we can certainly do, and I believe we will, but to find about $1,200,000 in this environment right now, I think is, is a challenge. One thing that the Chair of the Board of Finance said that I think is important, and I like the idea of it, was, think about lingering COVID expenditures. Think about things you may need to do differently back in the transition, and we present those a little bit separately, right? So it's like rolling forward the operation with program improvements based on more normal times, and then maybe what are some of the things we need to keep in place that we have some concerns with if we're, we're not completely, fully operational the way we've been used to. And we can kind of analyze that and seek support for those, maybe in a different lever, as, as they've talked about as we move through. So I think that's important to think through. I'll stop there for any feedback or answer any questions people have, and then I'm going to talk about the capital, because normally, we have a little more of an in-depth conversation at that tri-board about the capital. There was a request that we have a separate meeting due to the amount of capital that I'll talk about in a minute when I, when I share a slide with you. But-
Right.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I just wanted to make a comment about the tri-board meeting in the process, if it's-
Sure.
Do it now. I got to tell you, I've been wrestling with this since that meeting happened. I was very frustrated and continue to be frustrated with that meeting. In years past, and I haven't been here as long as most of you, but that was a much more collaborative meeting. We would make a presentation, Board of Selectmen would make a presentation, then there'd be sort of a meeting of the minds about what that number is and what the reality is behind that number. The past few years, there has been zero collaboration that I've seen. It's been, here's the number, go have at it, knock yourself out. And it's, the condescending tone of the Board of Finance is, is very inappropriate for that meeting. And as such, I think it's something I would like to put as a friendly recommendation out there, that when that invitation comes next year, we politely decline and just ask for the number. And then we'll go about our business, and we'll come back to them with a budget. For them to, to get up there, well, let me take a step back. Obviously, as you well know, they are traditionally, and their role is advisory, and as you said, Matt, giving guidance. They completely overstepped their bounds when they suggested for us to reopen the contracts with the teachers. That was not in their purview, and it was absolutely not appropriate for that meeting. And what is, what baffles me is it is also completely tone-deaf to what's going on out there. These are teachers, we, we are different than the town, right? The town, there's no extra roads to plow. There's no extra police that you need for COVID. But this board and our educator partners propped up an entirely second delivery system for the education in this town. Their people have been repurposed. They've been reassigned. They have taken on new roles. These guys are, and women, are first-line defense. They are as scared to go into work as, as your nurse or doctor. And for them, for the Board of Finance to sit up there and say with a straight face that a 2%, 2% merit increase is inappropriate, is stunning to me. Is absolutely stunning to me. So again, I'll just end there because I could go on for longer than you all probably want. But I would say again, that either we decline next year, or there has to be a meeting of the minds, because that meeting was very counterproductive, and I would say did damage to the relationship between the two boards.
I appreciate that fully, and, and do agree that the suggestion that we look to our teachers to do some sort of give back was not, was certainly not the right message for them to, to put out there. And, you know, you all heard me on that meeting. I, it's not something I support in any way. That said, I think we, to the repurposing, we have had a lot of math coaches and a lot of reading specialists who have stepped up and taught classrooms this year. And I think as we build the budget, I want to be mindful of the fact that our kids are going to probably need reading coaches and math coaches next year as they re-enter school in whatever capacity. And so I do think we're going to have staffing issues where we need to fill whatever gaps the kids might have. And I think that those are positions we should have on a COVID list. And I think we should be very mindful of that because I do, I, I, I think the challenges have been so many for the families, for the students, for the staff, for everybody, that I want to build this budget in a way that we're supporting everyone as best we can. And let's see where our number is, and then figure out how to move forward.
I agree with that 100%. I mean, we, I think we have a well-articulated process, and I think the conversation around the staffing is more important than ever because of the number of moving parts, right? I mean, we have a whole additional school out there. We have a whole assessment of achievement data as we go through, we'll need to do, and we'll have to rectify the two. And we will analyze every vacancy like we always do. We'll talk about them. We'll have conversation, and I think we'll put together a budget that this board and this administration will feel supports our students, supports our teachers, and we will, we'll advocate for it.
Okay.
But shouldn't we have the data today to support those same needs around, so like to what you're saying, Sue, around if, if we're going to need those additional, and I, and I agree, because I, I believe there are going to be gaps. And those gaps, I think, are even existing right now, right? You know? So I think those same gaps should, we should have the data to support that today to carry us going forward. I don't think that we should have the, you know, to, to your point, it should be in the COVID budget, but I think it should be there now.
You're saying add positions now to mitigate some of the gaps?
Right. I'm thinking, exactly. Because I'm thinking we should have, I'm thinking we would have the data to even support the need for it now.
For additional positions.
We have, we have certain data now. We'll have you at the end of the year when all these assessments are done.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I'm talking about like in-house assessment.
And I think we know it.
In US basis.
But I also think that, to, to your point about the meeting, and I thought that Rob did a great job teeing up the meeting, saying it's an open discussion, collaborative discussion. And I did not feel that that was, and I think that maybe if we do have a meeting next year, we definitely have to have a, a set program, because I think everyone needs to have a voice, and no one needs to be dictated to or treated, everyone needs to be treated equally and respectfully so that the conversation can actually flow instead of stall, because people stop talking very quickly in that meeting.
Can I go back to that? So, because I had a different feeling. So I actually had a conversation, because as you all know, it's my first year, right? Well, coming into my second year. So I thought he started out really well. And I thought what he was going to do, because last year what we did was we did go through, everyone presented, right? everyone presented, right? And I looked at it and said, we had this long document that was sent, right? But we didn't go through anything, right? But then he started going through the sections and I thought they were gonna step through it and kind of walk through it, right? Which would have been a great thing, but then he didn't do that. And then when the comment was put out there, you know, like when, I think, not Lisa, but when Linda made the statement, I, I was even texting with someone and they knew who it is, and I just said, maybe it was said wrong and I don't think she really meant it that way, you know what I mean? But I, I just think that, you know, sometimes people, sometimes things come across certain ways and it's not meant that way. And I think that she was looking at it like how it is in public, in, in private industry versus how it is here. And, and it is, like if I think about where I work, and Jeff, you can attest to that, at work, we're, we're told sometimes, you know, you go and this is your budget, it's two percent, you know, or it might be 10% and you figure it out, you know what I mean? And I think that's the tone in which she was saying, cause she came from that industry, you know what I'm saying? And it may have been wrong in how it came across, but she's from that industry.
But that's, but that's, but that's.
You all are.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was gonna say. I, I've been in the private industry for, for 25 years, half this board is, most of the Board of Selectmen are. That, that actually makes my point and speaks to the frustration, this condescending attitude of, well, this is the way it's done in the private sector, this is the way you should do it. That is, I mean, come on, let's just stop. Don't, don't tell me how it is in the private sector, I know how it is in the private sector. And oh, by the way, we're not in the private sector right here.
Right, but we're not, but the thing, I think the difference is, is in the private sector, that is what we have to do. And I think the difference here is that if we do make the decision, the town in a sense though, has to figure it out from the standpoint, and that's what they're saying, right? If the town has to figure it out from the standpoint of the budget.
I'm gonna kind of intentionally move, move it off of this a little bit, but I, I think one of the, I, I understand all those points, I think one of the challenges is a great deal of time and effort on their part went into figuring out why a 1.5?
Yeah.
I think a little bit of the frustration sits in, they ask us for information on fixed costs and there's no discussion of the cost of the service. So there's not a rectification between the two numbers in that meeting and maybe we just need to find a way to talk about that a little bit. The other piece about private industry, and I, I came from private industry as well, when your boss comes and tells you that this is the number, they run the company. We don't actually work for the Board of Finance, we work with the Board of Finance and I think that's, that's the other rub. I do in all fairness think that Rob teed this thing up very well, I think he was very complimentary of our teachers and our staff in, in their efforts. And I do, I, I agree with you in this sense. I think as we all take a lot of pride in what we do and we know as a Board of Ed, we've come in very close to the guidance. It, people do take offense to tone and things like that and it doesn't feel right in, in the moment. And we'll continue to work through it, we find a way to get it, get it done every year, I'm confident we will this year. But yeah, I agree, there's more conversation that needs to go into, how do we want to structure that meeting? Because it's evolved in different ways, you're right, over a 10-year period.
And that's, and that's, that's certainly something we can approach as we come on to it next year.
I don't think Zoom helps.
Maybe some lessons learned from this. Right, when you're in the room, it's a little bit different.
It's easier to have conversations.
Yep.
I just wanna, I mean, just, so Jeff's not hanging out there, I mean.
Jeff's never hanging out there, we're all with Jeff.
I, I would never been, been able to articulate it as, as well as you did, but I, I left that meeting very frustrated and it was a, it was a, it wasn't collaborative, I felt that it was more of a lecture and I didn't really feel like it was a tri-board meeting. We were attending a Board of Finance meeting and maybe that's one way we can change it in the future is to not have it be a Board of Finance meeting, make it an actual tri-board meeting if there's a procedural way to do that.
And years ago, it was very much a little bit more even-handed with the three boards at the table together and, and maybe that's a, something we can talk about going back to. But I, yeah, as I say, and I've had conversations with some of the members of the Board of Finance this week, we do work very hard to come to their number and we need time to work through that, but our job first and foremost is to put together the best school system we can. That's our fundamental job and our priority is our staff, our students, our teachers and how to put forward the best school system we can within reason.
Right, but, but we do that and we were super conscious of the cost.
Absolutely, yes, always.
And to like, and to go to a meeting where.
They act as if we're not.
That every year we come in above budget and disrespectful of them.
And we worked very hard to meet their guidelines and that, that felt like it wasn't recognized in that conversation at that time. But that said, I think it's time to move on to capital.
Should we just, just one, a conversation?
All right. I gotta move the slide, hold on. Good, all right, so this is just really one slide, the difference I wanted to make is, is a big one. And, and this thinking came out of the three board meeting and the special request for us to have a meeting, have another meeting to talk about capital. We know that there is significant capital needs on the Board of Education side, we've gone through a tremendous amount of time and energy to identify those, both in maintenance and in a new vision for what our school buildings could look like over the course of, of many years. The town is entering that same phase in terms of a long-range study. So what we've done here is, this is the same sheet you saw last time with the following changes. We took the maintenance needs off that were there for Latimer Lane and we replaced them with what we determined, you know, last spring as the first best option for our long-range planning, which is the Latimer Lane renovation and the Henry James addition. You see the major renovations broken out at the bottom? Put them both there for conversation. I, I think it's important and in conversation with board members, Amy and administration, that when we move forward to the three board meeting to talk about capital, we have everything on there and we can talk about priorities. Did not want to move this forward without the large-scale project there and risk the fact that, hey, it's not in process where it should be at that time. So that's why you see the, the dollars there and I think that is the centerpiece of our conversation with the Board of Selectmen collaboratively as we move forward and the Board of Finance. When we model this out and we, we discuss our priorities, what are we able to get off the ground here in year one and what are we not? They, they talked about some of their challenges with the debt service line and, and we know some of our challenges with the condition of the facilities. So I think we've done our work, we have our priorities and I think they need to, we need to work through with the other boards as to where are we really going with this, but I would recommend strongly that we advocate for that first option. And if we need to have conversation of breaking those two projects apart a little bit, I think we all recognize the dire strait needs of the Latimer Lane community and that facility down there and create some momentum about, around that being the most important capital need that we have in the district. So that's why it looks like this. Wanted you to see it before that meeting gets scheduled. I know we haven't put that in place yet to try and like that when we get back from the new year, right? First couple of weeks in, in, in January, so I'll keep everybody posted on that.
Appreciate that, yep.
Makes sense? Very good.
If you have one more slide if you wanna, if you wanted to, if you need it.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. So, just to cost out.
Okay.
Thanks, Erin.
Not letting you off easy last meeting, Mrs. Murray.
No, I'd like, Broke, come on in and you can get the clicker down this way.
Oh, you don't want me manning that?
Oh, you can if you.
No, I think you'll be better off.
So, so one of the things that is critically important is to keep you abreast of the legislation and courses that are coming through, through the Connecticut State Department of Education. And I know with our Board of Ed Curriculum Committee, we had the opportunity to bring to, bring to you two new courses, the Capstone Project and a Passion Project that two teachers had put together at Simsbury High School, Latino Studies Course. And so we're energized by talking about these, but this is one that is a mandated course. It's an elective mandated course. It went through legislation in 2019 and CIRC, which is our State Education Resource Center, put together a, a large group of educators and other people in which to design a course and we'll be talking about that in a few minutes. And what they're looking for through this advisory group, they put together a curriculum with very specific topics, units of study that will be, and you'll see those in a few minutes as well. And so that has all gone through what, most recently, and we'll, we'll hear more about it, and you have papers in your folder that show the, the report from the State Board of Education from last week, December 2nd, on this course. So this is a course that falls in the Humanities Program. It is a course that will be mandated in the 22, 23 academic school year. So next year, there's going to be, over the course of starting in January and through 2021, opportunities for professional learning for teachers. And if schools can, they can pilot it. It is a curriculum that you must follow, you cannot take anything away from it, you have to use it and can add to it and it is a one-credit course. So we're gonna help you, I've invited, you know, Georgia Robert, who's an Assistant Principal at Simsbury High School, she's been actively involved in this work through the Capstone, the Passion Project, Latino Studies Course. She's very, very good at leading this work at Simsbury High School and overseeing it. So I thought it was important to bring her here tonight to help describe this program. So I want to pass it over.
Can I just ask a quick question? It is a mandated elective? So can you, like that, that just seems like an oxymoron to me.
So I guess it is, I should explain that a little further. It is a mandate that high schools offer it.
But students do not have to take it?
It's an elective. So it's a mandated elective, which means mandated by the districts that a high school has to offer the one-credit course, but it's an elective in regard to whether students take it or not. There's also some other topics that go along with it. For example, some of the recommendations say you have to finish your World Civ and your US History, which would mean this would be a senior course.
Okay, okay.
We struggle with that a little bit. So we're trying to make it as flexible as we can and we'll, we'll talk, you know, a little bit more in detail with that as well, so.
All right. Thank you.
Are there, are there other mandated, mandated elective courses? Are there a lot of?
Well, the Financial Literacy Course was one that had come through that we were doing, that we'll continue to do.
Oh, I thought that was just plain mandated.
Yeah.
Well, that is mandated, yeah, that's not an elective actually.
It's not in the core curriculum.
It's outside the core, right.
And so there's top, there's talk of other topics coming through, like a Native American that potentially could be in legislation right now, but I haven't gotten details on that at this, this point right now.
The key to this that is very critical as we talk about the budget is that every time they mandate something, it costs us money that aren't, that isn't in our budget to start.
Correct.
So it, it really is a real, it's very difficult for all the districts in the state to do mandated things.
And what, what we're hoping to do as well, and we've been working really hard, is our whole notion around equity and wanting to ensure that we're offering all of our, through K-12, a very culturally responsive approach to teaching and learning for kids across content areas. And that'll be the second part of the conversation as we talk through this, but to give you highlights on what this course involves, I think is what we want you to know.
I just want to, last week at the State Board of Education meeting, they highly, you know, put their stamp of approval on this because this was a long time in the coming for the State Board. They are the ones that come up with the premise, the idea and then, you know, bring it to the legislature, you know, for, for their final approval and final vote. There is talk, as Erin had said, about possibly in Asian Studies, Native Americans, so there's a number of things that the State Board will also be taking upon itself to start looking at this, you know, for, you know, out in the picture. Well, when they're talking about the mandated and what we're trying to do in the advocacy part is, is to tell the, the legislature, no mandates, just, you know, we've got plenty of them out there, just to kind of put a pause on what's mandated and take a look at some of the other things, but not to come through with a full-throttle mandate, you know, of a course, either elective or what have you on districts because all the districts are in the same situation. The legislature really isn't concerned how you're going to, how you're going to, you know, budget it, they just are concerned about, you know, if it's mandated, then you have to implement that. So there's, there's a lot behind that before it really even gets, you know, down to a district level.
Right, right. Well, I will, I wasn't planning on talking numbers. I don't get as excited perhaps as Neil.
No one gets as excited as Neil.
But I, I will say that our social studies program is three and a half credits, it has been three and a half credits at the high school for a long time and we have far exceeded that. So we do have so many students who go on to do four full credits and then we have a whole nother group of students who often will do two credits in the senior year in social studies. So a course like this, in theory, you know, it might pull, say, seven kids who would have taken sociology, maybe a few from psych, a few from AP Government. So just a thought there that working it in is, is exciting to us and we may see slight, you know, changes to the other courses that are there, but they shouldn't be drastic changes.
Will this be offered as like a Level Two course?
So we're excited about the potential for this on many levels, very much kind of geared to like driving the vision of the graduate forward. We're talking a lot about multiple levels and, and maybe having, you know, students in the class who might, we're gonna look at even ECE options, so the Yukon Early College Experience Options, but also having students who might want to take it for the traditional college prep Level Two credit, kind of in the same classroom and working together and in being more collaborative in that way. So we're gonna, we're excited to explore those options because we know for some of our students, it may be a little bit more appealing if they can take it for that ECE credit too. So, okay. So as you can see, we talked a little bit about the prerequisites. So we do see it, you know, primarily being a course that the upperclassmen would be able to fit in. It would be the full credit, two semesters, so the first semester would be devoted to African-American and Black Studies and the second semester would be devoted to Puerto Rican and Latino Studies. I did want to just quickly kind of read aloud the course description, I won't read everything aloud, but this course, it's an opportunity for students to explore accomplishments, struggles, intersections, perspectives and collaborations of African-American and Black and Puerto Rican and Latino people in the United States. Students will examine how historical movements, legislation and wars affected the citizenship rights of these groups and how they both separately and together work to build US cultural and economic wealth and create more just societies in local, national and international contexts. And really exciting to a lot of our work is that this is a phenomenal course that will provide students with the tools to identify historical and contemporary tensions around race indifference, map economic and racial disparities over time and strengthen their own identity development and address biases in their communities. So clearly this is a course that is going to the equity goals that we have and again, to that global citizenship, vision of the graduate, high collaboration, innovative course. And we have teachers who have been very excited to stay educated. CIRC has done a nice job of offering many opportunities to hear directly from the historians and professors who are the, the people behind the curriculum. At first that was new to us to have a curriculum that would be handed over, but as we learn more, you get really excited and drawn into the work. So we have the department supervisor, Rich Curtis, several teachers, myself, who have taken advantage of those workshops and opportunities over the summer and recent months. So the next slide is just an example of, so what, you know, what will they be handing us? In addition to the units and the sequencing, they will be giving us the learning objectives, the essential questions that are already developed. And soon we'll get to see the full curriculum resources. I noticed they talked a lot about even speakers. And if you look to the next slide here, you see in Unit Five of Semester Two, contributions of Puerto Ricans and Latinos in Connecticut. And I don't know that it comes through in this outline that you have, but I do think there is a strong push. there is a strong push for, you know, looking at your, your local history and looking at the history in the state of Connecticut. I'm sure many of you know the amazing resources that we have in this state, and I see this again as a more innovative, collaborative class, where there will be more of those partnerships and opportunities to check out some of our own resources here in the state in a, in a post-COVID setting.
So we're going to transfer over to Sue to, to talk a little bit more in detail around the equity goals that we have in place.
Can I just ask a quick, quick question before you?
Georgia, you can stay right here.
That was a quick escape.
Everybody's afraid that when I speak of.
Jeff, you're cut off.
It's a question, I think I asked this in curriculum, but I, maybe I didn't. It's, I, I love the idea, I love the concept. It was, it's really a question of semantics on the Latino side of that equation. I, I understand Puerto Rican, you know, Hartford is the third, has the third-largest Puerto Rican community in the country, so I understand the importance of, of Puerto Ricans in this community, in this state. But obviously, Latinos is a much more broader term, and I just wonder, is this, you know, i- if a student looks at that course and says, well, oh, they're only going to talk about Puerto Ricans and not whatever, Venezuelans or Colombians or Argentinians or what have you. It, it, it could be just how it was presented in the legislation, but it, I don't know, it just feels like maybe we should, I guess what I'm saying is that, that title of that piece of it doesn't necessarily seem completely on target to me, but I just wanted to.
You know, and I think those are the kinds, as the, it goes through the legislation, these are the wordings and the ways the scripters that come through, until we actually have the curriculum in front of us and are able to really dissect and work with it. Although, as Georgia said, we've had teachers that have been part of these conversations, and I think the course that we demonstrated at the Curriculum Committee, the Latino Course, Studies Course, is a much broader way in which to, to address that. And that will be an elective, a half-year elective course that will be piloted next year.
I completely agree. I just talk about that title.
Yep, you're right. And that's where we're trying to get our heads around it as well.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree, and I think also, looking, I've had the opportunity to look closely at a couple of the opening units, and I, I think the title doesn't quite do justice to the broader scope, especially in the opening unit, so. And I just want to add that we have had some great collaborations with neighboring districts. So we're also, I just want to say, the unique aspect of having a curriculum that will be across districts is, is exciting, because just in two weeks, we've heard from Farmington High School, E.O. Smith High School, wanting to partner and hear from our kids on the SHS Equity Council, and kind of share what their schools are doing, and, and increase that collaboration. So we're really excited. We've worked with Manchester recently, we've done site visits to Manchester, and it'll be really nice to be able to cross-collaborate between districts with this like course, so.
But wait, wait. Sorry. I got a little caught up in reading the learning objectives while you were doing your presentation, so I apologize. But I wanted to ask, you mentioned that we're starting next semester?
No.
With, with a half-year? No? Oh, I misunderstood that.
In the 21, 22 school year, it's in the Program of Studies.
It's in the Program of Studies.
It's in the Program of Studies for the kids to choose to take full year?
No. No. We are, this is a, it's a separate, this is the, this is the, the difference. What came forward with two teachers, a, a social studies teacher and a Spanish teacher, was through their Passion Project work, they designed a course, but partnered and tried to hear what was coming forward in this particular course.
Gotcha.
So what we have at this point right now is this Latino study co-taught, hoping to make it an ECE, a Yukon Early College Career Opportunity, and that will be piloted next year. But the good news is that we have that curriculum that we've written here in Simsbury. When we get this new curriculum, we can see what the connections are.
Gotcha.
And then in the 22, 23 school year, there will be a full year course elective.
Which will be more of this.
And there still could be a part, you know, an elective for the Latino Studies.
Okay.
So we're trying to figure out what this will look like. We're showing this to you a little bit early at this point, but we wanted you to be aware of it, because it does align with what Sue's talking about and guiding, you know, the work across the district around equity as well. And we want you and the community to know, we're working hard at wanting to be culturally responsive and providing the opportunities for our students as they go through our, our classes.
Right. And I like the idea of multiple levels in the same class, just to give the access to kids who maybe aren't at that AP level, who want to be involved and take those classes. I want to make sure that they're getting included and, and have that option as well.
Correct. All right. All right. Are you sure? Yes. Georgia, you can sit right here if you want. Well.
Just in case.
You're trying to get out of here. Good luck, honey.
We didn't know how long you were going to be here tonight.
So what I wanted to be able to do this evening is just bring this course back to our equity statement. And we had said from the very onset of our equity statement that we wanted to make sure that this document came alive in our practices. And I think that this is a good initial step towards looking at that alignment. So if you recall the equity sta, and it also gives us the opportunity to revisit the statement and see it live in practice. So if you recall, the equity statement is broken into three different sections, our definition, our core beliefs, and our stance. And so what I just did is take a very brief opportunity to highlight those aspects of our statement that are in direct alignment with this new course. So you can see it there. And talking about the dismantling of racism and all forms of marginalization that impede growth and harm our community. In our core beliefs, we talk about growth towards the achievement of equity, and that betterment and continuous improvement process. What I'm really excited about is when I look at the learning targets of this course, how it really gets at this second core belief around silence supports the oppressors and prevents positive change. Talking about expectations and access. When I had the opportunity to come and speak with the board about this new shift for me overseeing teaching and learning in the district, talked a lot about expectations and access for all students to those expectations, and to your point, Susan, that you were just speaking about. So I wanted to highlight that in stories. We understand that there's been so much work that's happened at the curricular level, and I'm looking forward to this next kind of component, where we look at what are the stories behind the what of our curriculum? And what are we teaching? And most excitingly, how do we teach that? And again, I think that that alignment is, is really apparent here. And then finally, the stance. You'll remember that the stance is our action items, and one of the pieces of feedback that this board gave is not only holding ourselves accountable to look at data around student performance, but that curriculum is key. And again, I think that this is a first great step as we look at equity across what we teach, how we teach it, and how do we provide access to our students. So just wanted to share that before I turn it over to the summary of next steps.
Thank you.
So I think we've gone through this. I mean, it was legislation in 2019. We're now at the point where the curriculum will come to districts in January, have the opportunity for ongoing professional learning for teachers, curriculum work at our end, and that it will be a course, that will be an elective course at our high school in the 22, 23 school year.
Great. Thank you. I'm excited that this is getting, moving forward. It's a, it's such, I, I love to see this. So thanks for all the hard work in putting it together and marrying it all up into this great, this great course for us. Anybody have any more comments? Questions? All right, now you go. Now you're free and clear. All right. With that, any further public, we have no other public audience? Nobody has come while we've been meeting and gabbing, so future business. Next Board of Ed meeting will be Tuesday, the 12th of January in the new year. Excited to say we will be at the Simsbury Public Library, allowing for more space and more participation if all things go well.
Yes.
So please double-check that as you get your meeting notices, so that everybody makes sure we're at the library. Fingers crossed. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll give you the motion.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone want to second Jen's motion?
I'll second, and I'll say it's so great to see Erin, and we won't miss you greatly.
Thank you very much.
That's your last meeting.
Yes.
I second the last meeting.
You second the last meeting of Erin Murray.
So make me a sad face.
Just in case you were wondering. All right. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. See y'all next time.
One in the corner?
I know.